Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council to order and ask Pastor J.C. Hopkins from Cornerstone Word of Life Church to come forward for the indication.
Bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day, bringing this group of citizens together to advocate for our city. I ask that you please watch over our council and our mayor so that they make good wise decisions for our great city. Watch over all of our citizens here, lead us all in the right direction, cover our hearts with warmness, and we thank you for another beautiful day. In your name we pray, amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Council President Robleski? Council President Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Here.
Councilmember Seaford?
Here.
And Councilmember Spears is on her way. She has texted me. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
We have one in the city clerk's office. We have a poll worker that will not be able medically to fulfill that obligation, so we're going to have her removed, but we have alternates to take her place.
Okay, so when you come up for the resolution, you'll just amend with that one correction at that time? Okay, otherwise, the agenda is approved. We have next the approval of the minutes number 2023-06-RG from March 27th, 2023. Any motion in a second? Any discussion? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And motion passes. Presentation and awards, and first up is a proclamation by the mayor.
All right, and we received notice that the representative from Har can't be here tonight, but it's a proclamation for Fair Housing Month in April, and I'll just read the one paragraph here. Whereas the Huntsville Area Association of Realtors is committed to highlighting the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure everyone to the right of a fair housing. So it's April 23rd of all of 23 for the Fair Housing Month, and that's it. I'll just leave it at that. We'll get this to them.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have a presentation by Warren Avery for our comprehensive annual audit report.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Adam Nelson. I am the audit partner for Warren Avery, and I'm in charge of the city's financial statement audit. It's nice to see everyone again. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the city's 2022 fiscal audit results. First, I'd like to start off with going over what our audit opinion says, and we were able to issue a clean or a modified audit opinion, and that's the highest level of assurance that we can provide any entity, so that's a very good thing. There's also a report on the supplemental information that's within the financial statements. Those are schedules and statements such as about your participation in the RSA and your OPEB liabilities, et cetera. We don't issue an opinion on those, but what we do is we actually reconcile those and tie those back to the audited books and records and make sure there's no discrepancies, and there are none to report. As your city, you're audited under governmental auditing standards. We're happy to report there were no instances of noncompliance with major laws and regulations identified, nor were there any matters relative to internal control that need to be discussed today. Some qualitative aspects about the accounting practices that we're required to talk to governance about. First, if there's any changes in the accounting practices. There was one change this year, and it talks, and it relates to some of the procurement methods and the certain thresholds where you are not, no longer at the city required to seek out either bids or quotes, et cetera. And we do want to point out that that's kind of against best practice. We typically want to have at least three bids or quotes, I should say, even if they're not formal bids. Just some documentation to ensure that the city is getting the best and most value out of the resources they're spending. All the significant transactions that we identified were properly recorded. There was a change in the useful life measurement on several things related to infrastructure. That created a $21 million noncash transaction this year. Again, it's depreciation, so it is strictly a noncash accounting transaction. There were no other unusual transactions noted. There were also no transactions identified that lacked guidance or authoritative consensus on how to record them. In your financial statements, there are two very large estimates on the books. The first is related to your participation in the retirement system of Alabama. That is a $10 million, almost $11 million liability that is currently sitting on the city's books. That is actuarially determined every year. We do not come in and audit those estimates. There's an actual certified actuary who does the calculation. What we do is we review the assumptions they use, compare them to what other industry standards are, and we see if everything seems to be in line with what we're used to seeing, and in this case, we were. The other large liability is about a $500,000 liability for the other post-employment benefits that you provide to your retirees once they leave the city service. There were no difficulties encountered in the audit. There were no material audit entries necessary to make the books and records be properly stated. There were no disagreements with management, and there were no other findings or issues that we need to disclose tonight. Some key items of note that I'd like to go over is I'd like to talk about kind of the financial health of the city. The city has a very strong financial health. Its assets outweigh its liabilities by $99.4 million. In for-profit world, that's called equity. In our world, it's called net position. You have most of it is tied up in your investment in your capital assets or your fixed assets, and then you also have about $50 million that's restricted for certain covenants and capital project spending. From this year to last year, your revenues increased $1.7 million. You saw an increase in sales tax this year of about 2.8, and your gas tax revenue increased about 1.3. There was a decrease in the capital contributions this year of about 3.1 million. And what that basically is talking about is when contractors or developers turn over certain infrastructures that they build as part of their projects, that comes over to the city as capital contributions. And so there's a timing issue. Sometimes a lot comes in one year, maybe doesn't come in the next year. As I mentioned, your expenditures, and there's a typo here, your expenditures increased $27.3 million. And that is, again, 21 of that $27 million change is related to the depreciation entry to catch up on changing the useful life of certain assets. Overall, we also saw an increase in the city expenditures that returned it to what was really pre-pandemic levels as everything went back to full operations again. Well, on this slide, what we do is we break down with the governmental fund balance. So I previously been kind of talking about net position, and that's more of, it has those noncash transactions in there. Your governmental fund balance is really more of a cash basis, almost, kind of way to look at it. So the city has quite a lot of fund balance actually on its books. $32 million of that number actually is unassigned. That means it can be used for the city's discretion as it feels needs for future projects and things. They are restricted, about $24 million is restricted of capital improvements, and you have about $2.1 million restricted for future debt service obligations. Next slide, I kind of like to show what, like a three-year look back and kind of showing how well the city is doing financially and how it keeps improving its bottom lines and its fund balance. So this is looking at just your general fund, which is the fund that's used to account for all the city's overall activities. It's not restricted funds or anything like that, or it can be spent on various different items. In 2020, you had a fund balance of about $19 million, and now we're at a $32 million fund balance. So the city's financial health continues to grow. On the next part of the slide there is your revenues versus your expenditures. One of the good things to note there is for the past three years, you've always collected more revenue than you've spent, which has helped to add to your fund balance overall. Here are some sort of financial condition indicators that we like to go over some of these ratios and just kind of, so you kind of put all these numbers into, well, what do they mean in real terms? The first one is total revenues over your general population. So for every citizen, you receive $1,332 a person. The next one I like to go over is the general fund revenues excluding intergovernmental revenues as a total of your total revenues. And what this basically tells you is how self-funding is the city? Do they need federal dollars, state dollars to cover their expenses? And the city's ratio is at 99%, which is very strong, and it is unchanged from last year. The next ratio goes over your transfers into the general fund, meaning there's other funding sources that are helped fund your operations of the city. Your current ratio is at 7%, and that's an increase of 5%. However, the reason that increased this year is because $3 million was transferred from the Ball Corp. collections of those funds and moved over into the city. Going down to indicator number six, the unassigned fund balance here over the total revenues. A higher revenue basically indicates you have funds to overcome if there's a certain need of funds. So for example, here, if a tornado were to impact the city, and the city would have to make massive amounts of repairs immediately, you want to know that you have that kind of flexibility at hand. Your current ratio is 68%, and that is very strong, and it actually increased this year 7% from last year. Indicator number seven is a good one also. Talks about kind of how liquid the city is. So for every dollar of a liability you have in cash and investments, you have $3.96 to pay for that liability. Again, that is a very strong financial indicator. And with that, I'll open up for any questions, comments, or concerns. And remaining in the back of the slides, we're also required to present you with the management's representation letter. That's what the mayor and the finance director sign, saying they take responsibility for certain aspects of the engagement.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions, council? I'd like to thank you and thank Roger Bellamy for all the work that you do in finance. It's always good to have validation of the strong position of the city. Thank you.
Without them, we couldn't get our job done ourselves, so we have to thank them as well.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation of Madison Visionary Award winners by Melanie Thornton, the executive director of Madison Visionary Partners. Welcome, Melanie.
So April is National Volunteer Month, and we wanted to recognize the winners of our recent community awards program. A big part of our mission at Madison Visionary Partners is fostering volunteerism in our community. The Madison Visionary Awards honors the individuals who make our community a great place to work, live, and play. We have four award honorees with us tonight, possibly three. I think Mary, oh, there you are, Mary Grace. Okay, great. Olivia Downs is our Youth Volunteer of the Year. She is a senior at James Clements High School, and last year she performed 275 volunteer service hours. And she received the Gold Level Presidential Volunteer Service Award. This is her fifth time getting it. And she focuses her volunteer service on veteran organizations and the Girl Scouts. Olivia, will you come up? Okay, so our Community Volunteer of the Year is Elizabeth Servideo. Elizabeth is a volunteer with the Madison Senior Center, and as part of her volunteer work, she preps over 125 homebound senior meals weekly and 125 in-center meals daily. Is that correct? Yes, pretty amazing. Elizabeth, will you come up, please? Congratulations.
Our Philanthropic Business of the Year is Redstone Federal Credit Union. I learned that they give back to 693 organizations across seven counties in Tennessee Valley area. Just about every philanthropic endeavor in Madison has had the support of Redstone Federal Credit Union. Their commitment to service has left a lasting impact in our community, and we thank them for being steadfast community supporters. Mary Grace, will you come up, please?
Okay, so if you got your issue of Madison Weekly Magazine, you saw this woman on the cover of the April issue, and it is the Madison Visionary of the Year. It's a lifetime achievement award given to a person who has made a lasting impact in our community and has demonstrated exceptional leadership, vision, and drive to enrich the quality of life for the people of Madison. It is our honor to recognize Debbie Overcash as our first Madison Visionary of the Year. Debbie has volunteered with just about every civic and community organization in town, giving decades of service back to the Madison community. She is a role model for the next generation of volunteers. Debbie. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have any words you wanted to add in terms of MVP?
Well, obviously, Madison Visionary Partners is something that has already started the process of helping our city in so many different ways. To all the winners and anyone who was nominated, thank you, guys. It's a lot of volunteer hours to continue to make a really positive impact for our city, both from the school side, from the senior center side, and from the longevity side. Thank you, guys. And Mary Grace, thank you for all you guys do at Redstone.
Thank you. Next, we will open up public comments. All comments are limited to three minutes. As a reminder, please go to the podium and speak directly into the microphone so people at home can hear, and closed captions will work. First, state your name and your council district or neighborhood. You no longer need to state your home address. Address your remarks to me as the city council president. The council will not enter into dialogue at this time. This section of the agenda is for you, the public, to inform us, the city council, about your views. If you have questions, we will ask staff to address them at an appropriate time after the meeting. We've had a few comment cards turned in, so I'm going to begin by calling up Mr. Crown over. Sure, if you have something you want to present.
So I just recently moved here from Texas, have two young kids, and upon moving, found out that we are not zoned for Madison City schools. So we have our kids going to Madison Academy. Since we moved here late December, been looking for homes. Found a home on the builder, found a community that we want to live in, and have found out that the surrounding areas, so I circle it for you, the surrounding area, north side, east side, west side, is zoned for Madison City schools, but this community is not, which is a Phase 3 of Nature's Trail. And so I was curious if there's a possibility of single homes or the entire community could be annexed into Madison City and therefore annexed into Madison City schools. So that's the only question I have.
Yes, I think typically those are done on the front end, not the back end, as far as the developers. And part of what council has done over the course of the last few years in managing a growth policy is to look and work with folks where it makes sense to bring it in. So I don't know all the specifics to that one, but at this point, it's typically done, again, on the front end, not the back end.
Is there anything that I can do further to get information on that?
I've got contact information here, and I'll get with our Director of Developmental Services and see if there's anything I can get you that would help you with that information.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll keep his card if it's okay.
Okay, that'll be great. Next, we have Bernadette Mayer.
Good evening. I'm Bernadette Mayer. I live in Heatherwood Subdivision, District 5, Renee Bartlett. My first item is restore the five minutes for each public comment on the city council agenda where it is now. Reject Resolution 2023-144R and spend city council meetings and city council work sessions on important city business instead of manipulating and aggravating city residents. I cannot tell you how upset I am about this. Number two, Madison Utility, item of city importance. I've recently been informed and realized that now there is extra electronics on personal use, which is city homes, city water meters, beyond the current electronic reading of usage. Evidently, about 30% of this is done since 2022. There's no way to opt out at this point, and I do not want this on my home. There's no cost benefit for this to be done. The idea to do this should be scrapped. People want, went to last Madison Utilities meeting to give their feedback input. I'm speaking here. I don't understand why this all electronic stuff needs to be put on. It's all of a big cost, and there's no real benefit. So that's, those two items have just recently spun into things since the last city council meeting. So number three, we residents want quality of life in Madison. We do not want our former city government changed. We do not want the additions of more bond debt to drive our city to be absorbed by Huntsville, which I see that's the direction we're going. We want city-elected leaders to lead Madison with the values of Madison residents and not of the elites and... like to look at and address from the agenda that you guys put out just before the meeting. So, that's, my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayer. Next is Rosalie Holcomb.
Hi, I'm Rosalie Holcomb. I am resident of District Two. I'm speaking on behalf of Madison Arts Council. Madison Arts Council is a fiscal sponsorship of Madison Visionary Partners, and soon will be relaunched as Madison Arts Alliance. Madison Arts, Madison Visionary Partners has been excellent as far as guidance during this process. Special thank you to Melanie Thornton and to Stephanie Walker. Thank you to our council, Mayor Finley, to the administrative staff, and to Mara Robleski, who is our city council liaison. We really appreciate your support. We're beginning to plan our summer concert series, and we'll have an announcement on the dates and the bands that we will have. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Rosalie. Thanks. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council who did not turn in a card? Please come forward.
Hi, Margie Daly, Karen's District. I'm going right to reading because you took all two minutes of, uh, time away. City manager, as per Munster.com, it's recommended for cities with a population of two-hundred-thousand to two-million, and that's the salary of six, six figures benefits and a car and so on what we're discussing, but we're only a city of sixty thousand in population. Act 1982 is how to install the city manager. After the election, Act nineteen ni- uh, 1991 states, this goes into effect after three mon- months and notification to the governor and DOJ for the class city, class eight cities, which you're saying we are. We'll know the ordinance after it's passed, and then we can read it. We can only speak after it's passed because we won't see it before. Nineteen ninety-one act kicks in after installing. Is that what the, why the law is numbered one through one-sixteen subsections? That would mean every argument for this, in favor of this, is a root. Can the residents expect to be lied to by omissions in perpetuity? Let's remember that, uh, many things will pass through the council. A transition team that had a Huntsville resident on it, so that shouldn't have ever happened in Madison City. Um, misinformation on the, of the city's website on this, and to accept recommendations, go forward with the proclamation, anyone could have voted no many times. When you say you only have one vote, just like the residents, that's not so. You guys pushed this through before there was a petition from Madison Forward. Twenty twenty-three one-four-four R, resolution to move public comments to the end of the meetings. All citizens at meetings should be able to hear constituents, just an attempt to silence us. It's disingenuous, disheartening, and anyone who votes yes tonight is against public input. The elected council's job is to represent the citizens. One meeting, you had a few comments, and the next meeting, silence us by pushing our comments to the end of the meeting. Ridiculous, attempt to silence the voters' voices. We're not sheep just here for you to fleece. I have spoken with a wide selection of Madisonites. Most have moved here to get away from the vision of the current council. Current officials do piecemeal in our neighborhoods while handing our tax dollars to developers. We have streets that haven't been paved in over thirty years. If a developer needs a road, it's immediate service. We went two-plus years without a capital improvement list. Nothing done for the current taxpayers.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. Your time is up.
Vote no on the city.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. State your name. Seeing none, we will close public comments and move on to the Consent Agenda and Finance Committee report.
The Finance Committee had reviewed the Consent Agenda and the periodic bills to be paid and found everything to be in order. With that, I'd like to move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? Ready for a vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Uh, we did have one item on the consent agenda. I don't know if you want to speak to it, Greg, or you do, Mayor, with respect to requiring price quotes for purchases of goods?
Uh, I think it was one of the things as the, uh, we were audited, it was one of the things that they said that we could absolutely do, I think, better, but we could continue to, um, make sure that we meet every qualification we have, and Roger absolutely agrees, and so we're gonna make sure that we also do that with what they said.
Okay. All right, next, we'll go to presentations and reports, and, um, Mayor Finley, you're up first.
Sure, and I'm, and I'll tie this right together with, uh, Madison Arts Council, the money that they have. Um, one of the things about it, it's going through Madison Visionary Partners because, again, from a charter standpoint, we lost that, we have that now. But the other neat thing about that is, and I go back to Ms. Mayer and what she's talked about, we have two hours every two weeks set aside in the mayor's office for our citizens to come see us. And Margie's seen it, Jennifer's seen it, they come, they can sit down, and my entire whiteboard is wide open to the public for accountability. I have a lot of people that come see me. One of the last ones that we had, someone came, um, that wanted to talk more about arts in the city of Madison. I was able to hook them up with the Arts Council, and they are now going to continue to join to work on some of the things that they want to see, that in turn, they can help go, I say, raise money for. Previous to that, we had someone that wanted to come and talk about murals in the city of Madison, and to be able to work on that and be able to raise money that the city wouldn't have to pay to continue to improve that for the citizens. So, I say that to say, please, if you don't feel like your three minutes is enough, how about thirty? How about an hour? How about a time where you can come and sit down and we'll listen, I will listen to what you want to learn and share anything I possibly can. Uh, and only other thing I have is, I want to thank our code enforcement team. They go out, you know, every day that they go out, you talked about it at the last meeting, um, when they go out and do some things. But again, last week, they picked up ninety-one different signs that are in the right of way, and I remind folks, especially in the times that we're having some of these signs for this election, please do not put them in the right of way, find yards for them, find different places for them, but the code enforcement guys, regardless if it's karate or cutting your lawn or anything else, if it's in the right of way, we are going to pick that up from a safety standpoint and from now that grass is getting ready to be cut, the fact that the grass is gonna be cut. And with that said, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. District number one.
Yes, ma'am, I just have one announcement, and that is, next Tuesday, April eighteenth at two P.M., we'll have our next cemetery committee meeting. It'll be in room one-thirty, the conference room, if anyone is interested. That's all I have. Thank you.
District number two.
Yes, um, at the last Madison Utilities meeting, Ms. Daly came and spoke with us about an opt-out option for the, um, radio frequency, um, or low radio frequency emitter on meters, and as of right now, there is no way to opt out. That does not mean there won't, something might not come of it, it's just that this is the first time anybody's asked to opt out. Um, it, what it is, is it is a, a little disc that sits on top of the meter, which is in the utility and drainage equipment, it's not on the house, that enables a very slow-driving truck to go by with a long antenna and pick up the meter readings as it goes by, as opposed to an individual walking by and manually, um, touching or coming real close to the meter with the, it's a thing that's on the end of a stick, and they wave it around. And so, um, that's a technical term for it, thing on the end of a stick.
I appreciate that, too. I don't have much of a technicalizer.
Yes, okay, it's a wand, okay. That's not what I think of when I think of a wand. But anyway, um, this will help improve efficiency for Madison Utilities. It costs fewer labor hours, and, um, it is something that will help our, um, give finer-tuned readings and allow us to pinpoint leaks and help homeowners find leaks sooner, even leaks that were not detectable by our old system. And so, this is an upgrade in the way that we read the meters, and, um, like I said, as of right now, there is no opt-out. But, um, Madison Utilities has public meetings every other Monday. If I'm not here, I'm over there. So, they are at five-thirty at, um, the Madison Utilities Building over on Palmer Road, and, um, anyone is welcome to come and do public comments.
Can I just ask, is there a cost for this upgrade to the community? So, it's really a benefit? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
District number three.
District four.
I have, uh, one, one item, Resolution two-oh-two-three-one-four-four R, authorizing, um, relocating some of the pu- public comments to the end of the city council agenda.
Okay, and we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Let's open discussion to move non-agenda-related comments.
Correct, so this isn't taking all public comments to the end. This takes non-agenda-related com- comments to the end, so opposed to five minutes, this gives you six minutes. If you have something on the front end that you want to talk about that's on the agenda, we, we definitely want to hear that before, before the meeting. If you have other items, this allows our, our, all of our department heads to go home and let us listen to what, whatever else is on, is on some, you know, someone's mind. So, this, this doubles your, your amount of time. You can do two, two, two times instead of one, and, but I, when I looked around the past several weeks, all of our department heads are still here when everybody else, we may be here for forty-five minutes to an hour on public comments, the majority of the people that are speaking leave, and our department heads, some are here at five in the morning, some are here at six in the morning, are still here at nine o'clock at night. So, when I looked around, I said, this, this makes sense to me, if it doesn't, you know, everybody else, that's, everybody has a vote, but I'm trying to look after our department heads and still be able to listen to our citizens. So, I thought this was a, a good piece of, we could split, split the baby in this and everybody win.
Okay, any other comments?
Just to be very, very clear, you can speak on agenda items for three minutes at the beginning, and then, if you have something else to speak about, you can speak for an additional three minutes at the end of the meeting.
Correct.
So, you would have, a person could have a total of six minutes as opposed to just three minutes.
Okay.
Just wanted to highlight that.
And this is for a trial period through May. We have a work session scheduled for May seventeenth where we will discuss the feedback that we're receiving.
Yeah.
That is what you're proposing. It is not a permanent change in the rules, in the order of the agenda, but a trial period until we can meet again.
When will it take effect?
At the next city council meeting. That's how the resolution is ordered.
And for clarification, this is what the Madison County Commission and Huntsville City Council do as well, so it gives us an opportunity to try it out.
Correct, they move their public comments to the end.
I just, I have one question, mo- mostly about enforcement, I guess, so if someone gets up and they're speaking their three minutes of something that's on the agenda, and they veer off into something that's not on the agenda, uh, I'm assuming that it's, council president has the option to stop at that point, correct?
That's correct.
And then they can further speak about whatever it is they're speaking about at their additional.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I have comments. I believe listening to the citizens is the first order of business, not the last. I do not support suddenly changing the public comments to the end, especially if we're doing it for a trial period in April and May, when we have this very important election coming up, um, and so, we're looking at changing our government, so to have people be able to come. I applaud the citizens that have been engaged in the process, have taken the time to come to the city council and to make their voices heard. Um, I've always championed the voice of the citizen. Um, and as such, I do not see a compelling reason to change the Madison way that we've always done it. I don't believe we have to do like, like Huntsville or anyone else. We're Madison, we've always done it this way. We've always put the citizens' voice first. Um, and I do appreciate our, our department heads and that the fact that they have to sit through this. But this has really been an unusual circumstance. Um, it's not all the time that our compliments go hours or whatever. They are usually very brief. I can remember years where it was just BB that got up and spoke at a city council meeting. This is an unusual thing, so I hate to look at it, changing a whole way we do things because we're in an unusual circumstance. This is only through May. Um, but I do appreciate that they have to wait, but I also think it's good for the department heads to hear what the people have to say. I believe that's important, too. Um, and respect really is a two-way street. I believe keeping the public comments at the beginning of the meeting shows respect for the citizens' voice, just as respectfully addressing the city council shows deference for fellow citizens. So, I'll be voting no.
Any other comments? Okay, ready for a vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robes- Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Uh, next, we, let's see, we have district number six. Karen, do you have any comments for your district report?
Oh, yeah. I'm not used to having to go next.
You go next every time after me.
Yes, you do, but usually don't bring up things, so.
Okay, last week, I attended the community centers construction meeting. I met with Lee Builders along with Steve Smith, and we followed it up with a walkthrough through the project. Um, just for an update, so everyone knows what's going on, the demolition work is way ahead of schedule.
We have a work session scheduled for May seventeenth where we will discuss the feedback that we're receiving. That is what you're proposing. It is not a permanent change in the rules and the order of the agenda, but a trial period until we can meet again.
When will it take effect?
At the next City Council meeting. That's how the resolution is ordered.
And for clarification, this is what the Madison County Commission and Huntsville City Council do as well. So it gives us an opportunity to try it out.
Correct, they move their public comments to the end.
I have one question, mo- mostly about enforcement, I guess. So if someone gets up and they're speaking their three minutes of something that's on the agenda and they veer off into something that's not on the agenda, uh, I'm assuming that it's, Council President has the option to stop if that's not correct.
That's correct.
And then they can further speak about whatever it is they're speaking about at their additional.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I have comments. I believe listening to the citizens is the first order of business, not the last. I do not support suddenly changing the public comments to the end, especially if we're doing it for a trial period in April and May, when we have this very important election coming up. Um, and so we're looking at changing our government. So to have people be able to come, I applaud the citizens that have been engaged in the process, have taken the time to come to the City Council and to make their voices heard. Um, I've always championed the voice of the citizen. Um, and as such, I do not see a compelling reason to change the Madison way that we've always done it. I don't believe we have to do like, like Huntsville or anyone else. We're Madison, we've always done it this way. We've always put the citizen's voice first. Um, and I do appreciate our, our department heads and that the fact that they have to sit through this. But this has really been an unusual circumstance. Um, it's not all the time that our comments go hours or whatever. They are usually very brief. I can remember years where it was just BB that got up and spoke at a City Council meeting. This is an unusual thing, so I hate to look at it, changing a whole way we do things because we're in an unusual circumstance. This is only through May. Um, but I do appreciate that they have to wait. But I also think it's good for the department heads to hear what the people have to say. I believe that's important too. Um, and respect really is a two-way street. I believe keeping the public comments at the beginning of the meeting shows respect for the citizen's voice, just as respectfully addressing the City Council shows deference for fellow citizens. So I'll be voting no.
Any other comments? Ready for a vote?
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Robes- Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Uh, next, we, let's see, we have district number six. Karen, do you have any comments for your district report?
I'm not used to having to go next.
You go next every time after me.
Yes, you do, but usually don't bring up things, so.
Okay, last week, I attended the community center's construction meeting. I met with Lee Builders along with Steve Smith and we followed it up with a walkthrough through the project. Um, just for an update, so everyone knows what's going on, the demolition work is way ahead of schedule. The transformation is incredible. It is just so open in there. If you've ever been in there, it's all cinder blocks and concrete blocks and it's like a maze. And now all of that's gone, it's all been gutted. They're way ahead, um, of schedule. It is just completely open and now they're going to start putting in the walls and bringing it into the shape. Um, and I appreciate the opportunity they gave me to go walking through there. Also, the Madison Police Citizen Advisory Committee, April fourteenth is the last day to submit your application for the Madison Police Citizen Advisory Committee. Uh, positions two, four, and six are going to be open. Uh, district six, I've received several applications. Um, and as soon as April fourteenth goes through, I'll be setting up interviews in order to talk to each of them before I make the next appointment. Um, once again, those that, around then Saturday, we had another rainy day. So the extravaganza, it was cold and rainy, but that didn't mean that there wasn't so much fun. We had hundreds of kids show up. They were able to get, get Easter candy and also to have the pictures taken with the Easter bunny. And so many of the parents were so appreciative that they had a place that was safe to come and bring their children in. So, um, I just want to thank the, the Parks and Rec Department for, uh, providing that for families. Also, um, tomorrow night, there's going to be a, a meeting for fentanyl in the teens. It's hosted by the Madison City Schools and the Partnership for Drug-Free Community. Uh, it is tomorrow night between six and eight. It's going to be at the district central offices over on Celtic Drive. So I would recommend this to any parents and their teens who are, it is a serious problem in our, in our community. And I think this is wonderful that they're addressing it. And, uh, that's all I have tonight, thank you.
District number seven.
Um, one thing, sorry, I guess two things. First one is the next Planning Commission meeting is a week from this, Thursday at five-thirty here. And then the other thing is, um, so I think it was, I don't remember what day, opening day was, was that April sixth?
Yes.
Last Thursday?
Correct.
Um, Mayor Finley and I were standing there as well as, uh, some other council members and, at the, the Trash Panda, uh, or Toyota Field. And, I mean, I was just commenting on looking out and seeing all the people and seeing all the businesses and things that have popped up around there. Um, and, and just seeing the, what is there now from what was there before? And what could be there in the future and additions that are coming, as well as some of those we don't know. Um, it's just amazing to see that being brought forward and what that can do for this city. I remember when I was very young, driving through Montgomery on Tyler Road and there was nothing but farm fields and everything on there. And now there is East Chase Mall that really started back in the, uh, mid to late eighties. And you look at it now and it's still being built and still being upgraded almost yearly. So it's just amazing to see what's there and what can be and what is right now. So, uh, it was just kind of a, a moment of going, wow, this actually has happened a little bit. So it's, it's kind of neat. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. Uh, last week, I participated in Leadership Huntsville's Public Safety Day. And I wanted to commend Chief Gandy for representing the city of Madison on the public safety panel. Um, also, next week, we were planning to have a work session on Wednesday, uh, April nineteenth, but, uh, we have a couple of people out, so we will not have our work session next Wednesday evening. Uh, instead, we will meet for our work session in May. As I, uh, previously mentioned, we will be discussing the feedback that we get on this temporary reordering of our, uh, business meeting. And, uh, we will have a few meetings, uh, so that we can discuss and see what the feedback is on that at the May work session.
And what's the date for that, just to confirm?
It's the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, thank you.
That Wednesday between our meetings. Okay, we do not have any board or committee appointments, so we will move to public hearings. Um, everyone will have five minutes to speak, uh, for public hearings. And Yvonne, are you going to present? Okay.
Good evening. The revenue department has two items for public hearings tonight. The first one is resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash one-four-zero dash R. And this is a request for J-Jog Incorporated Doing Business as Bosh Road Spirits for a lounge retail liquor class-two package license for their location at five thirteen Bosh Road, Suite B. The reason that this business is applying for a lounge retail liquor class-two package license at this time is because the business has been sold and is under new ownership. Everything is in order for this to reconsider.
Okay, you have anybody from the property owner here to?
No.
Okay, then we will open public comments, five minutes. If anybody wishes to speak to this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will close public hearings. Okay, and ready for a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, motion and second, ready for a vote?
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Next.
The second public hearing we have tonight is resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash one-four-one dash R. This is a request from J-Jog Incorporated Doing Business as Bosh Road Show. The business has requested an off-premises beer and wine license for their location at, uh, five thirteen Bosh Road. The reason that this business is applying for an off-premises beer and wine license at this time is because the business has been sold and everything is ready to be considered.
And these two properties are contiguous?
Correct, and you can see in this picture on your right side is the entrance for the package store and on your left side is the, um, package store entrance.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, we're going to open public comments. Anybody want to address the council on this? Seeing no, we will close public comments. And?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Ready for a vote?
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
And motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Okay, and city clerk?
Hello again. Um, tonight, I'm asking for your approval for election workers for the May ninth election. Their names are listed in your packet. And we have approximately sixty-two of them. I have one correction on District Four. One of the election workers will not be able to work, so I have removed that person. And that whole relocation can still function with the number of people they have. So I'm asking for your approval for resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash one-four-zero dash R.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, and just for clarification, um, what number did you just say?
Yeah, this is one thirty-six.
We have one thirty-six.
Yes, I'm sorry, one thirty-six.
It is one thirty-six?
Yes, ma'am.
And then for, for the record, what, who is the name that we're removing?
Esther Finley.
Okay.
No relation.
Oh.
Yeah. Okay. All right, but you have other alternates that are listed on the, on this list that were?
Yes, actually, we did receive a volunteer and we needed a place to place that person. So by happenstance, we placed them there, um, but knowing that this person would be unable to work.
Okay, and so is the alternate listed or yes?
I have made a change.
Oh, okay, so online, it looks correct except for removing one.
Online, it looks like it looks here with Esther still there, but we have made a written correction. And I ask for you to approve today.
Okay. Everybody, everybody cleared what we're doing? All right, ready for a vote?
Okay, I have, uh, Councilmember Roblesky.
Yes, aye.
And second is Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Thank you. Much faster.
Lisa, real quick, so Lisa, before you go. So first, thank you to everybody who's volunteering to support us here. And then they will all go through training. Judge Barger will come in and work with you.
April the twenty-sixth, we'll have three sessions. And, um, I will say with confident and pride that all of the election workers have chosen a time to appear for the training. And we've submitted their names to the probate judge, Judge Barger.
Good, just want to make sure, thank you.
Yes, I thank you. All right, engineering.
Okay, I have, um, two items, proposed ordinance number twenty-twenty-three zero-nine-nine. Uh, this is authorizing the transfer of city properties and granting utilities easements to Madison Utilities in relation to the current Western Transmission Main, uh, project. This first reading was back on March thirteenth.
Move to approve.
Second. Any motion, second, any discussion or questions? Okay, ready for a vote?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And second, I have resolution number twenty-twenty-three, uh, one-thirty-five R. This is authorizing professional services agreement with Strand Associates Incorporated for engineering design services on projects twenty-three, zero-zero-four Huntsville Brown's Ferry three-lane widening from Holiday Boulevard to Oakland Church, uh, in the amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-eight-hundred dollars to be paid from the Engineering Department budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion and second, are there any questions?
I do have a question. One of my constituents wrote in and they're wondering why if the master plan is calling for this to become a four-lane road that we're only putting in three at this time.
Give me thoughts.
I can tell you right now because first, you know, when the master plan is called, there's no money for it. One good thing in having, uh, Matt McCutcheon come in as county commission chairman is this is a road that I've brought forward many times to try to obtain funding from the NPO and/or the state. And it will be something that we now talk about, um, when we have our next meeting with the NPO with a little bit more support to possibly get it. But right now, there's no funding to do what the master plan calls for, but the traffic calls for us to expand this for better throughput and that's why we'll do that now.
Well, does it make sense financially to go ahead and do it three and then have to change it to four when we get money?
Well, I mean, we could, we could, I mean, with, with these kind of projects with the NPO, we're talking years and years and years down the road. So right now, we're looking at from Holiday to basically where Bella Woods starts, um, some of that is being created into some turn lanes there already. So we're going to try to line some of those up and make it continuous through there and also widen that, uh, that, that crossing.
So that, but the question would be, so if, let's just arbitrarily say we're, uh, lucky and a year from now we're paying funding, two years from now, we actually get the funding, um, could we use what we're doing in the four, four-lane plan? Would we be able, it's not going to go to waste?
No, no.
Just wanting to take care of the high-traffic area right now for better safety and throughput.
Right, we're not going to have to take this down to, to go to four lanes. It'll, it'll just be part of the process on the way to getting to four lanes. Um, and if we do get funding very, very soon, this is a part of the design that will have gotten done, which could be incorporated into the design of making it four lanes.
You just weren't aware that was in a proposal and the, and the plan that was looking at four? I'm just asking, the look on your face, you looked all surprised at it.
Well, no, I, I was aware that it was on the NPO pro, but I, I, but I'm not, I'm also aware that there's not any funding set aside for this and it wasn't anything that was, um, that was set up before we got to this point.
Okay.
The point is, at this point, we can improve the quality of life for our constituents, our citizens who live off of that road by allowing a, a left lane, turn lane, a left turn lane, where instead of blocking the whole road, the people would be in the turn lane who are turning left and it would ease traffic significantly in that area.
I'm not against the project, I'm wondering why it was, it's limited to the three instead of the four. And he explained.
Because of, because of funding and, and we're in charge of funding, so we did not fund him to go do those things. And, you know, what, what do you want to cut to do that? So we, that's why. I mean, you, you signed off on the budget just like the other six of us did. You saw what was in it. So I guess it's easier to tell him why it wasn't in there instead of him telling you why it wasn't in there.
Okay, any other questions for Michael? I think we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Planning.
All right. Our first item is proposed ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash one-eighteen. This is for vacation of a portion of utility and drainage easement , um, at the Free Park Preserve subdivision, which is off of Hardeman Road. And they're requesting to vacate two portions. Um, there's another exhibit associated with this, um, in order to accommodate entry monument signage. They had originally installed the signage in a center median, landscape median, and we, we typically do not allow that, so we had them take the sign out. And so now they're going to be installing the sign, um, in a more appropriate location. So we're asking for your approval this evening. Everybody's signed off on this.
Move to approve.
Second. Three motions in two seconds. We've got to split it between.
Such a good project.
I think you should get to any point that you can flip.
Motion to Spears, okay. Second to Shaw, okay. Ready for a vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilman, Member Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Next item is proposed ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash one-two-three. And, uh, this is to convey some property back to a homeowner's association. The property is highlighted in yellow. You may recall at your last meeting, I described this. The larger yellow piece is where the subdivision stormwater detention area is. The smaller yellow piece is where their entry monument signage is. As part of this overall project, approximately nine acres of the southern end of this overall track was dedicated to the city for open space. And there'll be a passive walking trail through there. We also have, um, a wider than usual sidewalk, kind of a greenway along the main spine road. That all got dedicated to the city and will maintain that. But in putting the legal descriptions together, these properties were inadvertently included and we really do not want to be saddled with the maintenance of their, even though the HOA has maintenance, if we are the owner, we see it as kind of a, an easy path to somehow being the city's responsibility or our liability as property owners. And so, um, we do not need them, uh, engineering definitely does not want them. Um, all of the departments have signed off and so we're recommending approval of this.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion second. Ready for a vote? Any discussion? Okay, ready for?
Council, Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Your next item is just a first reading. This is ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash one-thirty-seven and this is for vacation of a portion of an easement, um, behind lots one through twenty-six of the Acadia at Arlington Park subdivision. And you can see on this exhibit that thin red line, um, uh, behind the, the lots. This is, it's kind of an unusual, um, situation. There's flood plain, um, on the, uh, on the other side of that red line, if you will. And so there's an open easement that, um, the city required on this subdivision where they can't develop anything within that open easement area. Um, they, um, also are restricted in putting fences in there and so forth. However, in order to make some of the setbacks work for the buildings and, and when we're kind of juggling everything that needs to go on the property, we've decided that it made sense for them to vacate that little strip, um, of red. They were also recently at the zoning, um, Board of Adjustment and Appeals and received a variance for reduction in their setback for all of these lots, again, to make it buildable. Um, so we are supporting this, everybody has signed off on it. Um, this again is the first reading. If you have any questions, please let me know. I'm happy to get back to you on them or at the next meeting. And the next item is also a first reading and this is proposed ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash one-thirty-eight. And this is a vacation of a portion of utility and drainage easement at the Heights at Town Madison. So you can see Town Madison Boulevard, um, and this is if you were going over the hill, if you will, and you know where they've been, um, on the, I guess it would be the south side of the hill. Um, that's been approved for lots. The north side of the hill, between Town Madison Boulevard and the interstate, is where they've been moving rock forever. There's nothing been approved there. There's nothing that approved there, so this is the other side of Town Madison Boulevard. And you can see that hatched area along the road. Um, we required, um, a bit more right-of-way in certain areas, um, but then we also have development standards that mandate a minimum, um, a maximum setback, and so in order for them to be able to comply with a maximum setback, um, we have to vacate some of the easement so they can get the building where it's supposed to be. It's just, um, a particular circumstance of this, um, this location and lots and the TND zoning that they have. So the TND zoning was designed, thinking about more where the, I'll say, the smaller alley lots are. Um, Town Madison Boulevard being more of a collector has a, a different set of circumstances, but they still have to comply with our development standards. So we are supporting the vacation of this easement, and we'll be back, um, at your next meeting asking for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Beth.
Mayor Beth. What was it? Thank you.
Thank you.
She come back, yeah.
All right, hello. So, uh, I'm, I'm here for, uh, Proposed Ord, uh, Proposed Ordinance Twenty Twenty Three Zero Eight Five, and this is, uh, regulating wrecker services, uh, here in Madison. We had this up initially, we pulled it down before it went for a vote, uh, due to objection of, of, um, one of the wrecker companies that contracts with us, and we worked out the disagreements with them. So what this does essentially is, is first, it requires every wrecker, uh, company that tows a vehicle out of Madison to contact our police dispatcher to let them know that they're towing, what they're towing, why they're towing it. Uh, that way, we have a record of it, so, uh, we get lots of calls for stolen vehicles just to find out that they were towed for one reason or another. So this will give us an opportunity where if an officer gets called, the very first call he or she is gonna make is to our communications to let them, you know, to check to see if the vehicle's been towed. Uh, so it'll save us time on that. And then secondly, it sets, uh, minimum, uh, rates for towing, if they're towing for, uh, city purposes such as a, a traffic accident, a disabled vehicle or something like that. And I believe that's a hundred and seventy-five is what we agreed on. Um, and then, uh, the other cost would be, um, the company that tows for us and stores vehicles for us, uh, they have a, a problem with people coming up and wanting to get into their car to get something out, and they'll come back two hours later and do the same thing, and it costs them money that they have to bring people in off the road or have employees take them out to their lot. So, uh, what we set was it's free for the first time you come out there, but any additional time you come out, you have to pay the tow company thirty-five dollars. And then, uh, finally, uh, I believe they're allowed to charge thirty dollars if they use an entire bag of absorbent material at a crash scene, because there's a cost to them for using that.
Okay, can I motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion in a second, any questions? Discussion, ready for a vote?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Second Proposed Ordinance is Twenty Twenty Three One Twenty Four, and this is to amend Chapter Twenty Two, Article Seven, Sections One Ninety-two and Two O One A of the City Code, and this is removing inoperable, uh, and junk vehicles, and it, it's just changing the time allowable from seven days to a forty-eight hour period, so we can get these junk and abandoned vehicles out of people's neighborhoods a lot quicker now.
Move to approve. Second. Hey, motion in a second. Any questions?
Chief, can you just, real quick, what puts a vehicle into this category?
Uh, vehicles that are parked on the city street without tags, uh, if they're missing a tire, if they're up on blocks or something like that, where clearly the vehicle's been uh, is inoperative or, uh, appears to have been abandoned.
Okay.
And I think you, you normally, Chief, put a tag, 'cause I had a complaint on this in one of the subdivisions I represent, and I went and checked on it, and there was a tag in the driver's side window that said when code enforcement had been there and how long it had been staying. So I'll just say, I appreciate going to forty-eight hours, 'cause it, when they sit there for a long period of time, it really is an eyesore.
Right, and, and if it's on a city street, we will do the tagging, and then we'll put down the, the time that the vehicle.
Right.
So it gets notice to the owner.